Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Saginaw City Council. We'll open with a short prayer and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, please watch over us as we deliberate the matters relevant and pertinent to the city's operation and functioning. Keep us aware of all the concerns of our citizens. Remind us always that our staff are the ones that make things work in this town and that without them, we could not be successful. We appreciate all they do and protect them as they go about their duties. In your name we pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You're seated. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Potem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Millen.
Here.
Member Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Ostasch is excused. And Mayor Clock.
Here.
We have eight members present and one absent.
Thank you. At this time, I want to say good evening to everybody. Because this is a public meeting, we ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, this is a good time to remind everyone, and perhaps especially those here at council, to please shut off or silence all your electronic devices. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. I have several announcements tonight, Mayor. I'd like to let everyone, city residents, can put their fresh Christmas trees out to their curb by 7:00 a.m. on their regular trash day throughout the month of January. And you do not have to remove any ornaments off your fresh Christmas tree. Also, the city's waste convenience station is open to city residents, excuse me, second Saturday of the month from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. And it's at the Public Works Building. Entrance is located off of Holland Avenue. City residents may dispose of items such as building materials, recycling for glass, plastic, and paper. The next collection day will be this Saturday, January 12th. And City Hall will be closed Monday, January 21st, for the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. The holiday will not affect any trash collection services. City Council will conduct their annual strategic planning session during the next regular meeting, which will be held on Friday, January 25th, at 8:30 a.m. at the Anderson Enrichment Center. And Mayor, next we have a public hearing.
All right, thank you.
Our public hearing is regarding an amendment to the Urban Cooperation Agreement with Otchville Township to provide water services.
Regarding the public hearings, the purpose of the public hearing is for the members of the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive information from the speakers for consideration regarding specific action being requested of us. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please begin by stating your name, address, and your relationship to the subject of the public hearing. The first speaker will be considered the main presenter or designated representative, and you will be allowed 10 minutes to speak. Other speakers will be limited to three minutes. Because public hearings are not question-and-answer sessions, speakers may only ask general questions for council's consideration, not questions directed to individual council members, city staff, or the audience. At this time, we would, let's see.
You want to call for comments?
Yep, call for comments prior to anyone speaking. Any comments for anyone to make regarding the amendment to the Urban Core Cooperation Agreement? Are there any comments from anyone? There are none. Hearing none. We need a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Good point.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Harry, at this point in time, we have any public input, Madam Clerk?
No, we do not this evening, Mayor.
All right.
So that takes us to remarks of council.
Councilmembers, I'd like to remind you all of the three-minute limit. And today, we work to begin with Mr. Ostasch. Councilmember Ostasch, with his absence, we will begin with Councilmember Balls.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. I hope everybody's feeling a lot better than I am.
I haven't heard yet.
And I'm not feeling physically well, as far as, a little bit mentally, and a little bit disturbed too about the present conditions of the United States, government being shut down. It bothers me. And it seems like it should bother everybody else here. It seems like all the municipalities all over the country should be sending a letter and expressing our concern, especially about our citizens who may be losing some financial situations going on with income taxes, maybe social security, and other checks and that nature. I just got back myself from coming to the airport, and a lot of the TSC workers were not there. I know it should have been at least six when I came through at one spot, and it was only two. So it took a little more time for us to get through. You know, and I think the situation is really getting out of hand. And I think we all should be concerned about that. A lot of people was really excited and was bragging when the stock market was going up. But now, when it went down, all the people that was bragging didn't say a word. You know, so I think that maybe the people that put him there should be the first ones to have something to say about that. I mean, because only one person has caused a different situation about a wall and things of that nature when, should I think, in 1825 or something like that, 1850, Texas was part of Mexico. So it's just amazing how things going and the racial undertones that go along with the situation is just disturbing, especially considering the fact that a lot of people from Texas and Mexico come here to Saginaw to make this a great place, to work in our fields and with the beans and the tomatoes and other things that had to be picked, when a lot of other people did not want to do that work. So that's just my sentiment on that. But other than that, I'm looking forward to 2019 for the city of Saginaw. As long as we keep getting along and making things happen here in the city, I'm going to be happy. And thanks, Lyman.
You're welcome. Councilmember Millen?
Thank you, Mayor Clock. I just have a couple of updates and a little shout-out to some local businesses. The Rifkin &amp; Company Scrapyard has closed their former Niagara Street location. They have opened their new location in Washington. And I mention this because that's a step along the way of our riverfront redevelopment, that that property will soon be vacant and able to be repurposed. I attended the Saginaw Spirit Game Saturday night. Besides letting everyone know it was a rousing spirit victory, I wanted to mention there were over 5,000 people in the seats, highest total this year, a near sellout. And this is also part of our downtown Saginaw and our riverfront development to keep the Dow Center full. And the most important thing to me was I noticed the majority appeared to be young people and families. And this was a great evening for everyone who was there. They really know how to put on a good evening's entertainment there. Businesses I wanted to mention are part of the Saginaw area and, in fact, the greater Great Lakes Bay region growth. These are businesses we don't often see on the marquee when a new project is going up. It might say Spence Brothers or Palmford or something. But these are the people who provide the guts of those buildings. And it's Delta Steel, Valley Steel, and Wendling Sheet Metal. These three businesses are all located in the city of Saginaw, all have expanded over the past 20 years and, in fact, specifically the last five years. Wendling Sheet Metal has doubled the size of their operation. Delta Steel just built a new outdoor storage for their steel products. And Valley Steel has trucks going in and out every day to the projects they're working on. So these are part of Saginaw's growth. They're not the big names we often hear about or that we're seen to be courting. But I know the economic development people in this area, Saginaw Future and our SEDC have worked with all of these companies on their expansion and retaining the jobs they have and adding new ones. So I just wanted to thank them for what they're doing to help Saginaw grow. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Scherzer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to backtrack, well, Happy New Year to everybody. I'm going to backtrack a little bit because of my absence of last council meeting, but I just want to say thank you to the city of Saginaw Green Team for allowing me to participate in their door decorating contest. There were eight teams, and it was very interesting to see the creativity that came about from their theme. Hopefully, more departments get involved in the future, but congratulations to the CDBG for winning. Also, I just want to remind the residents as well as council members to think of fire safety and make sure you have an exit plan. The temperatures are changing. We change our thermostats and we get those space heaters working, so please make sure that you are aware. And then last, I just want to give a shout-out to the Saginaw YMCA. They're going to start their upgrades of their facility and improvements within, right on our riverfront, so keep an eye out. And they do have membership specials right now, but a few council members I see in there while we're working out, as well as city staff, just want to make sure everyone's aware of what's going on with our Y right here in the city of Saginaw. So that is all I have. I am excited for 2019 with the city and what we have to offer, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Moore?
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Years. I'd like to do some shout-outs and I'd like to send our condolences to Bob Johnson and his family of the loss of his mother during the holidays. Terrible, just was real upsetting on Christmas Day to get that phone call. One of the things that I guess I'm really concerned about is our elderly, and we sometimes forget them. So I'm asking that everybody in the sound of my voice, if you've got a neighbor, just check on them. Just check on them, because for some godly reason, this holiday, we lost a lot of people in this city. And a lot of them were natural causes, no murders. Okay, knock on wood, no murders. But they just died, and they died during the holiday season. I've attended probably six funerals in the past three weeks. Bobby Delion, a shout-out goes to his family for burying his dad today. Some of these people are key people in the city that we don't talk a lot about. Bob Kemp, her husband, is going to be buried tomorrow. So I just want us to just pray for the families and keep them forever close to us. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Councilman Bench?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year to everyone. I will be brief, but I do want to mention that with the weather being cold, it's been mild or certainly, but I know people are still probably looking for ways to make ends meet and help cover energy costs and whatnot during this time of year. And Consumers Energy just announced a $10 million contribution to their care program, and that's something that people can apply for through Consumers Energy. And also just reminding people to call 211, because they also have other programs out there that they can direct to, helping costs. And much like Brenda said, heating is an issue, especially with our elderly citizens. As Councilman Balls was talking about our government shutdown, we are going to see at some point, if something doesn't change, some dramatic consequences, I think, for, I'm not sure, not just how, you know, we operate the city itself, but I know at Region 7, we have a plan in place, and after a certain amount of days, we have to cut services. And then we cut them back further. And we cut them back further, because there are only so many days that we have funding for operations if, you know, and these are the most vulnerable. We're talking Meals on Wheels, we're talking in our shut-in people, we're talking about people who need to get their appointments and can't afford their own transportation and maybe can't utilize public transportation. And, you know, we're talking about low-income folks. We're going to see changes to their ability to buy food, their ability to, you know, pay bills with their cash assistance. So, you know, there are food pantries available. We have 211, of course, like I mentioned before, but we have foodpantries.org that can direct folks. But I think just us as council members have to be prepared and educate ourselves to where these resources are, because if there's not a change, we are on the front lines and we're the first people they're going to call, they're going to knock on our doors, and they're going to come to us, and they're going to ask us, knowing that we didn't cause the problem, but they're going to look to us to help fix it or mitigate it. Just make yourself aware of those things and make sure you're giving out that 211 number to anybody who needs it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bryant?
All right, thank you, Mayor Clock. Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. Looking forward to 2019 with an optimistic lens, just want to share some of the things that have been going on. We've had, it seems like we haven't met for a few weeks, so even more happens, especially when it comes to community events. So I won't name all of them, but one of my favorite was the Tamale Taste Off with the Civica. That was absolute, man, if you guys get to be a judge for the Tamale Taste Off, I'm telling you, man, you have to, absolutely have to do it. We had a great time. It was so much fun. The second thing I wanted to talk about was a community conversation. This is my 15th one since I've been on council, and it was great. We talked about things that are going on in the city, talked about capital improvement plan, which is extremely important when it comes to fixing potholes and the day-to-day needs and some of the projections that we're going to look for in the years to come. Also shared some information that I had on Prop 1 and Prop 3. So it was good. We had about 35 people there, so it was nice just to sit down, have a cup of chili, cornbread, and talk about the things that are going on in Saginaw. Next, I wanted to, I had already expressed my appreciation to the manager and to the chief, but I just publicly wanted to say thank you so much. I had a couple of events. I went on a ride-along on Christmas Day. It wasn't poor for me, because I know that a lot of our employees, especially in public safety, don't have the opportunity to spend Christmas morning with their families. So I wanted to go out on Christmas Day. So I went out with Officer Adams and Debo with the K-9 unit. We had a really good time. But there was a really tragic event. Mayor Potem Moore mentioned some people that passed away. One of those people passed away. And for it to be Christmas Day, it was just, it was something to be there. And it really gave me a perspective on some of the things that our officers deal with. The second one happened on Christmas Eve. I was stopping to a local convenience store with my brother, and we seen there was some trouble that was going on. And one of the patrons of the store there from out county, she was overdosing on heroin. So it was, it was a really wild experience, especially to be there with my brother, who was a junior in high school, and it really kind of put things into perspective for us on Christmas Eve that this was happening. This kind of stuff does not take a break. And it was, it was really tragic to see, but I just wanted to extend my appreciation to the fire department. They were there, as well as the police department and MML, but it was Officer Engelhardt. And I can tell you this, if he had not been there when he was, that lady would not be here today. So I just wanted to express my appreciation and thanks to them for the job that they do. There's a lot of times where things, you know, get very interesting in the city, and that was definitely an interesting time. Thank you to our public safety personnel, both police and fire, for everything that they do to keep us safe. Really, other than that, we've been having a great time at the community development block rate meetings. Those have been going great, and I'm really excited. And I'll be there tomorrow. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Forbes?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to mimic all my fellow council folk and wish all the residents of Saginaw a very Happy New Year. Lots of good things on the horizon for us, I'm very sure. I wanted to invite the residents of Saginaw to an event coming up that I think is really interesting. There's an organization called Incremental Development Michigan that is having a small developer seminar in Bay City on January 23rd from 6:00 to 9:00 at the City Market. I'm going to go, because I want to learn how we can become a more friendly city to developers. But if anyone has ever thought about maybe be working on some small development, I encourage them to look up this organization. Again, Incremental Development Michigan. I also wanted to thank the Ezekiel Project for their invitation to their listening session on January 31st, 6:00 p.m. at 403 South Jefferson. I can't make it, but I'm hoping that some of my fellow council folk will go and keep me up to speed with what the thoughts of that community are. And then also, I just, I wanted to express that I'm looking forward to our strategic planning session. There's a lot of big issues that are coming up, and I'm excited to get, to dig a little deeper into those, since I'm still learning. So lots of good things on the horizon for us, and I'm just thankful to be on all of your team. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Councilwoman Forbes' comment about the strategic planning session, it is a public meeting. Public is welcome. It's going to be at the Anderson Enrichment Center. I am assuming all council members are going to be there. If not, please make sure you let staff know. Hopefully, you will be able to make it. If it's your first one, you'll get a lot of fresh ideas and some chance to present some ideas, so plan on being there. I also want to mention the boards, commissions, and authorities. They have a number of vacancies. We are always looking for vacancies for these, for someone to fill these vacancies, volunteers. Councilmembers are welcome to attend. In fact, under the council rules of order, they're expected to attend at least one council or one committee, board, or authority per month, as part of the goodies as council members. And hopefully, attend more, because you can bring back input to this board on what's happening in those, in those authorities. It'd be great if you could join one or more of those. I would point out that most of them are not, do not have positions reserved for you as a council member. Most of them are same as any public member. You have to apply and become a member of the committee through the normal process of appointment. And that's true for the public at large. They have to fill out the application, and it does give everyone an opportunity to have some input in city operations and functions of our city, as well as input to this council by reports and information you provide us. So I encourage all the council members and the public at large to look closely at the available vacancies. The city clerk has that list of vacancies. I think there's probably well over 20 on our 15 or 20 different boards, not individually, but altogether, there's certainly a lot. In fact, one of the ones that needs it the most is the Human Planning Commission. I believe there's seven vacancies. Now, that one is by district, so you have to live in the right district to apply, but I'm sure there are a lot of people out there who are capable and could do that, and I'd encourage you to do that if you have not. But as far as the most other boards, they are not by district, they're at large, and you can apply for any one of those. I want to thank our police department particularly on the crime stats being down for 2018, as well as the state police, who are helping the police department. Crime is down again for another five or six consecutive years now. It's not a huge amount, but it is, and that's good to see. There are some categories where their actual increases, but the majority were a decrease in crime, and that's what we want to continue seeing. With that, I have nothing further. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. That takes us to the reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would echo what a few have already put out, the reminder of the strategic planning session on Friday, 25th, and we start at 8:30, and presentations will start at 8:45. If you haven't been to one, there'll be several presentations about big topics, a few of them requested by council members. And then at the end, there's some general discussion. Also, what we're trying to put together is a lunch joint session with the Planning Commission and Zoning Commission to specifically talk about some issues with zoning and planning. And that's also, will help us fulfill some of the requirements for the redevelopment-ready communities. You need to have that joint meeting, strategic meeting annually. Mayor did talk about boards and commissions. I've had some questions on them, and I would remind everyone that all of those meetings are open to the public. We encourage council members to attend those, even if you're not a board or commission member, to learn about the groups and what they're doing. And there is public input time at each meeting, so even if you're not a member, you can speak and communicate council's goals and objectives, so everyone's always welcome for that. The next citywide meeting hosted by Chief Ruth is on Thursday, January 24th, at 5:30 p.m. The organization hosting is Adams Boulevard Association, and it's being held at Thompson Middle School. And as the mayor said, Chief is going to be talking about crime stats at that meeting. Also, the Saginaw Police Department Reserve Unit recently held their 13th Annual Awards Recognition Luncheon. At the meeting, they awarded the Reserve Officer of the Year, who is Reserve Sergeant Mark Norton. Mark has been with the unit for seven years, has done a great job for the city. He's also a member of the Finance and Fundraising Committee for the unit. Congratulations to Sergeant Norton. If you're not familiar with what they do, they do a lot of work with the community. They help the police department in public, for public events. They work at Friday Night Live, they work a lot of events at Jibway Island. They also do a great deal of fundraising for that committee that Sergeant Norton on is important. If you recall from the last meeting when we bought the SUVs, one of those was purchased by the Reserve Unit with funds that they raised. And also, it's highlighted in their newsletter this month, they do a teddy bear giveaway to students, or to children at Covenant who are in the hospital over the holidays. So that's a great event that they do. And they work with Garber Buick, employees of Hemlock Semiconductor, Michelle McCoy of KMS Creative Group. So they do a lot of good work in the city. And finally, the city did receive an approval letter from the Michigan Department of Treasury for the corrective action plan for our retiree plans, both the OPEB and the pension. So if you recall, those need to be funded by a certain level, as outlined by the new law last, was passed last year. And both of those plans were approved at the October 8th, by city council. Two of the big items in there is we need to form a qualified trust for retirement savings and initially deposit about $1 million of contributions into that fund and continue with annual contributions. And that was for the OPEB part. And we also need to allocate additional funds to our DB, Defined Benefit Pension Plan Surplus Division, was something that we formed for those extra allocations. So we're doing much better, as you recall from the audit, our financial position is very good now, but we need to start allocating some of those funds now to these for future planning. So we need to implement the corrective action plans within 180 days of the approval that we received from Treasury. So we plan to have that implemented by the end of this current fiscal year. So by the end of June, we plan to have both of those things done. And we are reminded that Treasury will continue to monitor our plans to make sure we're following through with what we said we would do. And with that, that concludes the management update.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we next are...
Do you want questions?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. It's always good to remind you. Does any council member have questions with the manager?
You can tell them.
Yes, Councilmember Millen?
Yes, thank you, Tim. On the plans, I just want to see if I'm looking at this correctly. Some of the contribution to the OPEB trust would be the same money as that we've been doing a pay-as-you-go for these OPEB benefits. Once it goes in the trust, then it pays out of the trust?
No, this is an additional savings, so we pay as you go, so we would be setting aside additional money in the trust fund for future payments. So it's something that is encouraged. We do have some money set aside that we'll be using to start that and possibly make some future contributions. From a financial standpoint, it's for OPEB costs, so what you do when you establish that trust fund is, we need a resolution passed by the board that says, "We're establishing a trust, and this cannot be spent on anything other than OPEB costs." Theoretically, you can pay the next year's OPEB costs with that trust fund, because that's what it's been established for, but you're, the way that we're setting it up, you want to use that to pay for future costs.
We're trying to build a balance in that trust, then?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Mayor Potem Moore?
Good job, because I was worried, especially about the unfunded liability. Good job, good job. Whoever figured it out, good job, Amy, staff, whoever. Good job, because the last time we had Mr. Jordan in front of us, he kept talking about the elephant in the room, that we've been ducking for five years since I've been on council. So, good job, staff.
Any other questions or comments for the manager? Right? Okay.
Mayor, we are at the consent agenda.
Yeah, at this time, the agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV Channel 191 for the public and council members to be aware of it. At this time, we could, I'd appreciate a motion to approve the consent agenda items, leaving room for exceptions. leaving room for exceptions.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk? Any exceptions in Consent Agenda? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, it's carried. Thank you. Next...
Mayor, we are at Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports.
This is where everybody on council has a chance to present your comments and input from boards, commissions, and authorities, as we were just talking about a little earlier, so, does anyone have anything? Mr. Councilmember Millen.
Uh, as I commented at the last meeting, we had a, uh, MBS Airport Commission meeting coming up. Some of the results from that meeting, which was in December, uh, the Airport Commission elected a new chairperson, and that happens to be former Saginaw City Mayor Greg Branch, who's the new chair of the MBS Airport Commission. A major project that is proceeding out at the airport is a new taxiway, uh, which will improve airport operations on the, uh, aircraft side of the terminal, and, uh, that's gonna be continuing this year, and construction should be beginning within the next year. The funding is in place. And the next Airport Commission meeting has been canceled, but the, the date, January 17th, will be used for a committee meeting of the Marketing Committee, and we're going to be looking at requests for proposals for a marketing plan for the airport. There are some opportunities available at the moment, since the Flint Bishop Airport has lost some direct connections that Saginaw, MBS Airport maintains, direct flights into Minneapolis, so we'll be exploring those options. And that's my report from that commission.
Thank you. Any other reports? Any other reports? All right, um, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We are at Appointment of Board and Commission Members.
We need a motion to approve the items leaving room for exceptions. There are, I believe, four of them.
So moved.
Three? Three of them. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on any of the appointments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? It's carried.
The next order of business is ordinance consideration and adoption. We do have one this evening, and it's in order to amend Chapter 110 of Title 11, Business Regulations, by amending Section 110.37, titled, General Business License.
I, uh, we need a motion to adopt, and before that's made, I want to remind everybody, this was previously laid over, after having been introduced, I think, at our last meeting, so everyone's had a chance to review it. Any motion to, uh, adopt?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried.
Here you are at miscellaneous business.
All right.